Calling me into order, stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Brewer.
Here.
Trustee Carter.
Here.
Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Tatez.
Trustee Todd.
Here.
Trustee Zupan.
Here.
I will entertain a motion to go into the executive session for the discussion of pending litigation. It was moved by trustee Carter, seconded by trustee Grant.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tatez.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, I will entertain a motion to reconvene.
Second.
Moved by trustee Carter, seconded by trustee Grant. Matter of course, please call the robe.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tatez.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Motion carried. I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes of the committee meeting of the whole January 15, 2019.
Mr. Mayor, before you accept that motion, may I ask that under public comment, the very last person who commented, we need to change the first initial of his name from A to D. Other than that, it's fine.
Okay, that being said, I'll still accept the motion to accept the minutes, January 15, 2019.
So move with that change.
Second. Moved by trustee Zupan, seconded by trustee Carter. Any questions?
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tatez.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I accept the motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting, January 22, 2019.
Mr. Mayor, before you take that motion, I would beg a recommendation to make a couple more changes to revise minutes that were presented to you today. If you go to new business, we need to change the enumeration. So A stays as it is. We turn to the next page where it has A dot one. That should be B, and the following should be C.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to accept the minutes and revise edition with the new corrections.
Second.
Removed by trustee Carter, seconded by trustee Todd. Any questions?
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tatez.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Next item, public comment. All questions and comments will be directed to the mayor and his speaker.
Move, Marv.
Call the robe.
Marv, move. Turn your recorder on. Hey! Marv, move. Move. Just move. Some of that language is uncalled for.
I'm not going to be so threatened. God is in me. There you go.
That would be incredible. What you gonna do? Take half of this.
Okay, our public comment, all questions and comments will be directed to the mayor. His speaker may comment on one matter at a time. Business Talk Village figures a lot of one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may that engage in debate. Comment, replies, or votes. I will listen to all comments, and at the end I will respond. Please state your name, and you come up to the microphone.
Committee, I will be not using this this evening. I will be going from the computer, okay? Pat Couch. And Mr. Mayor, I'd like you to know that the dog issue has not been resolved. Knew it wouldn't be. I am working with the chief. He did call me today. The dog was back last night at a quarter to 10:00 PM, running on my porch, running the cats out of my yard. The gentleman has evidently today met with the individuals, one of the officers, met with the people that are in that home. They are aware that that dog is still running loose. They sent out officers last week to that residence, to SERVES, whatever. And being that I have cameras around my property, I saw the officer when he got there, knocked on the door. They did not come to the door, so the officer left. Three minutes after he left that property, out the door they came, got in their car, and they left. So they were there. So they're quite aware of this dog issue. And I understand that they are telling the chief that they're going to be removing that dog and giving it to another family member. Well, that was the same story they told last year, last summer. Now, I don't know, I forgot to mention to the chief today, when that dog is removed, I think we need to have proof that that dog is removed. There's also been another dog incident this week. So we do have a major issue with dogs running it wild, and something needs to be done. It's lost revenue for this village because these dogs do not have licenses or their shots. And somebody is gonna really get hurt. Now, this officer had to shoot again. So there's another shot discharged at a dog because we have not dealt with the problem. So I will give the chief a chance this week, and hopefully, this dog issue is gonna be resolved really soon. I hope. Thank you, chief.
Judy Cast here. I am again going to ask why our HR person is still being paid for negotiations? And I'd like to know when the negotiations restarted? And I also would like to know if she's gotten a pay raise? And if so, when and how much? And to put your stress level a little higher, it has been reported, and it has been on the news, that Chicago, being the nasty crime rate area that it is, has gotten a forty percent less crime rate than prior. And the reason being, Mr. Burgess, is because they hired more police officers, and they have more people roaming the streets. If they're gonna do something bad and they see a squad car, they're not gonna stick around there and do it bad there. And we need those squad cars to be on our streets. And I'd like to know why we're still playing around with getting police officers when we've got money on the budget for two officers. You never did explain that, and I'd like to know why that is, considering the fact that our eligibility list is up in October? You don't have much time left. Don't even know if anybody on that list is available anymore. And you know how long it takes to get that list together and the amount of money it costs to do that.
One minute.
So I would like to know, if possible, to have some answers, because I'm really getting tired of writing FOIAs. But I will if you don't want to answer me. Thanks.
But the board, including the mayor, is aware that it is now a Class IV felony if you do not provide public records to the public. State Rep. Anthony DeLuca has introduced that, and it was unanimously approved. And I'm saying that because on February 11th, I requested a vacant homes list. On February 19th, I was told that there was an extension required because there was a substantial amount of records that needed to be collected. On February 26th, I was told there was a five-day extension because there was still a substantial amount of records that needed to be collected. On March 5th, I received the vacant homes list. It was totally redacted. There was not a single address on that list, to which I mentioned to Mayor Burgess that that was wrong, that that should not have been that way. I should have been able to get that information, to which, to Mayor Burgess's credit, he said, "You will have that list unredacted in the morning." Thank you, Mayor Burgess, I appreciate that. I did get that list. But I'm saying this to say that. Do you, as a board, know that your FOIA clerk is not answering FOIAs properly? Do you know it's a Class IV felony? Because as a board, you all are responsible for what your staff does. Do you, as a board, know if it's true whether or not the Afelak payments weren't made for three months, and we have employees who may not be covered? Do you, as a board, know that? Because you, as a board, are responsible for your staff. And do you, as a board, know that two years ago, we were promised longer hours at the village hall? And not only have we not got longer hours, we've actually had our hours reduced by one hour for lunch. We also have a building department that used to be open for nine hours a day. Nine hours a day. It's open three hours a day now. We have a full-time building department director with a part-time assistant, and it's open three hours a day. That is an inconvenience, not only to our residents, but to contractors who come from so many faraway places to come and bring a new home to Sock Village, to get a permit so that they can fix this home up for a resident. And they come here and find out, "Oh, you mean I have to come, I only have from 10:00 to 12:00, and 1:00 to 2:00, that I can do this?" It was open for nine straight hours in the past. So I just want to know if you, as a board, because actually, you're responsible for your staff. Thank you.
Linda Washington, I want to say, first of all, that I am really, really disappointed in the behavior that I just witnessed by the trustee Tatez toward the village clerk. And maybe it needs to be a note sent out, and maybe it needs to be something posted to let women know that they're not safe in the village hall. When I was a trustee, two residents in this audience began talking and having a verbal confrontation, and it ended up in them literally almost fighting. When I sat up there, I talked to the men that were sitting up there. I said, "You all gonna let them women fight? They say they grown." I got up out of my seat, I came in this audience, I got in between, but another resident stopped two women that were gonna fight. Anytime a man gets in a woman's face and talks to her rudely and begrudgingly, like he wanna fight her, threaten her, that's a problem. And if this gonna be a situation where you have men in a room, and you let a man get in a woman's face, and you don't feel a need to do nothing or say nothing about it, shame on you. I wish you all could be that diligent and get reports to the residents. Every time tonight when he called your name and asked you to give a report, you would say, "No report." And been standing for a year and a half. You have all these unqualified people doing all these jobs residents just got up here and talked about. Poor services, poor communication. We talking to answering machines, we can't talk to a live operator. I mean, is this what the village hall is all about? Is this a pathway to progress? Two more weeks.
Maria Escovega, I'm here again to talk about social media, but I just want to make it clear that I know you have issues trying to understand or distinguish between a question and a statement. So I'm letting you know mine is a statement. So at the end, when you go to answer some questions in a roundabout way, you don't need to say, "You don't answer social media," because I'm not asking a question on social media. I'm just merely coming up here to make a statement. Since you all want to go on social media and talk about people and stuff, you all have been talking about how your trustees don't vote the way you want them to. Well, that is not true. They do vote the way you want them to. Because when you asked me to be the treasurer, you all told me that Zupan had an issue with me being treasurer. And I'm not sure why, because she recruited me to be treasurer for our home association. But anyway, you said she had issues, but then you all also said you were going to talk to her and tell her to back you up. And so when it was vote time, Zupan voted yes. So don't say that they're not doing what you want them to do. They are. Carter had never been to a meeting. How did he come in the very first day voting yes to everything that you wanted him to vote yes to? And Grant, well, you all said you would mold him. And you did. So what can I say? They're all doing exactly what you want them to do, which is not what the people want. And those, and the people, the residents, were the ones that put some of you in there. And the rest of you, you were put in there, you know why. Derek put you in there because he knew you would say whatever you want, Derek. Thank you.
Bernadine Hopkins, I have some questions about the, I guess it's the accounts payable. On page one, I'd like to know, why does it cost over $500 to board a 21814 Carroll and 21746 Carroll? Actually, it's costing over $500, but it costs $300 to board a 21810 Carroll. I don't understand why there's such a difference, and I'm hoping you could explain that to me. Also, on page one, under the general fund, there was an amount of $493.88 for business after-hours event custom items. I'd like to know, what is this event, and what generated the cost? On page two, Comcast Business, I guess that's Ethernet, it's over $2,600 a month. I'd like to know why. The same item dated 2/15/19 billed twice in the same month for over $2,700. I'm not understanding why, what's generating that? Now, on page four, I'd like to know what are intoxicators? And also, what is dry gas? I don't know what those are. I'd like you to tell me what those are. And finally, on page six, it's something about safe-built building permits. I'd like to know if this is something that the village pays out, or is this something that we receive in? And what are the permits for? If I have any time left, I want to say this. I'd like to know why with the, my neighbor, she got a ticket for her garbage can being out, and she was out of town. I don't know if I quite get that, but I'd like to know who she would talk to about that, because it was brought in the next day. I brought it in myself, okay? The other thing is about what the lady was talking about, about the dog. It's a gray and white dog. I actually saw him trying to attack this man. I don't know where the dog came from, and I did call the police and all of that. I can't say if anybody came, because I'm gonna be honest with you. I went in the house. So the lady is right there. There is a dog problem. I have one myself, so I do have a love for him, but you gotta keep him under control. I think we need a little help with that. So that's it.
Your last item that you said about, on page, did you say safe built, what page was that?
Six.
It says, it's on page six.
Okay, thank you.
Safe.
I got it.
Oh, you got it? Okay. Safe-built permits.
Frank Williams, I have a question. The truck stop that's coming over here, I'd like to know which one of the wells are they gonna be using the water from? And what happens if that well runs dry? That they're pumping the water out. They're gonna be pumping the water out of those wells. What happens if the water runs dry in the well? Is it in a way, or there's another well that we can say we're gonna use, that we are sure that it's okay to use it? Second thing is, is who going to be able to go over to the police department or not and tell those people what they can and cannot do over there? Or is that out of our jurisdiction? That's all I have.
Kathy Batcher. Am I okay, Marv? Ms. Williams ran out of time, but the report that she requested was dated 1/28/19. Why did it take until March 5th to receive it? That's one thing. Next thing is, we need to, I have asked this question over and over again, and I know that we don't, policemen don't stop shootings. That's not my question. My question is, have you started the process to hire policemen? You keep telling us that it takes eight months or whatever. Let's get the process rolling. Second, we have money in reserve. If we get a dog catcher situation, we have empty buildings everywhere. Why not have our own, right here in the village? It will make us money. We can pick up these dogs, charge the people for their dogs running, make sure they get their license, make sure that they are vaccinated. And if they don't, we adopt them out. It's a win-win situation. I have volunteered for that position many times in this village before now. We need to get these dogs off the street. There, it is a danger. When people leave their dogs behind, they have been pets and loving. And when they're left to their own devices.
One minute.
They go back, thank you. They go back to their wild instincts. Then they become running in packs. And if you have a pack situation, I've seen it. Ain't fun. Someone will get hurt desperately.
Okay. Back off at the top, the dog issue. As you stated, Ms. Couch, that's the issue that the mayor has addressed, and as you stated, the chief hasn't talked to you. And right now, I'm waiting, not waiting, but I'll tell you, I'll let the chief explain exactly what it is that I had told you, and then here right in here that.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The issue with the dog, not only is this situation currently under review, but also the entire ordinance in reference to that. The bottom of the letter that was delivered to the dog owner in question has a threat of arrest. The reference of which that arrest is made under, under the ordinance, has certain levels of which had not been reached until most recently, once we noticed that the ordinance required the additional steps. There's a certain number of violations just to declare a dog vicious or nuisance, which we were able to meet that need, the past chief Kowalski did. However, the additional steps towards the level of arrest had not been made. Additionally, we've begun to put pressure, as I spoke with Ms. Couch, we've begun to put pressure on the owners in that every violation now that the dog owner gets a citation, the owner of the property is also being fined and issued citations. We're trying to push this issue from either direction to kind of set a game plan, because, as some of you have mentioned, this is not the only issue, it's not the only dog in the town. This will come up again, where there needs to be a full game plan and protocol to address people who are compliant, who are not compliant to this degree. I think what happened when they were putting together the ordinance, they expected people to actually follow the law. And up until now, they had. But now we have an extreme case where someone is just being a scofflaw, so we're going to take it to that extreme. Additionally, there's other issues with, once we do get the dog in custody, we're looking at the avenues of what to do after that. I have discussed with the animal hospital that we deal with in reference to their normal protocol as to whether or not the dog or the status of the dog. And the owner and doctor, we are still, we're still discussing what happens at that point. But my issue is, we'll cross that when we get there. We need to get the dog as soon as possible. But yes, it is being addressed, as well as the other issues.
Thank you. Thank you. As far as the HR, negotiations are ongoing. I mean, we're still in negotiation with two different bargains, so that's ongoing, and no. No, they were, HR was not given a pay raise. Oh, that came from. And as far as hiring officers, that's in the works as we speak. I've talked to the chief. We've, there's some things that we try to do, but we're not home rule. So we have to go and do it through the, through the academy, which means we'll have to go through our list and then the other list, and go from there to hire. So yes, that process is started already. It takes, as I said before. It takes, as I said before, it's gonna take about six, seven months after we go through the process and get this person on the street. So, but we've talked about it and we're trying to prepare for other things that may or may not happen. So, that process has already started to hire officers. I appreciate the information about, that was told about the class four felon being a felon now. If you withhold that information from the municipality. The vacant home list, I cannot tell you, but you did get that list. And as far as the items on the accounts payable, I can address a few of them. The rest I'm gonna let trustee Grant address them. But as far as the board of services, why are they different amounts? Because it could be a different size board up. It can be one sheet, mini sheets, one side, mini side. That's why the different prices is not the same. Everyone is not the same. So, it's gonna make a difference. Why one is larger, probably larger than the board up. The business hours is something that we gave for the advertising and then also bringing together our businesses. And that's something that we've done before. We would do it again to try to get our businesses and also new businesses to come to the village. New businesses to come to the village. So, that's something that we try to do for Comcast.
So, in regards to Comcast, there are four different invoices here. November 15th, December 15th, and two for February 15th. The third one, the second from bottom, is actually the invoice for January 15th. That is just a typo. So, instead of 215, it should say 115.
Intoximeters, that's from the fire department? Or is that from the police department? Police department? Okay. It's self-explanatory thinking that you blow into it if you... So, if you ever had to use an intoxicimeter, you probably would understand that I myself have never done. Safe built. Pardon me? Safe built. For the building permits and inspections.
Yes, so if I understand this correctly, state bill, they come out to their third party we use to actually do our, contract them out to do the inspections. And that's pretty much it. They pay, they charge us monthly, and that's the monthly bill. And for August, November, and December, that's pretty much, pretty much it.
Okay, and the last item, the truck stop. If the well runs dry in Salt Village, not only will the truck stop stop getting water, the village will too. I mean, we have two wells. And we have three pumps. And if that well runs dry over on the other side, quite naturally, this side would kick in until that runs dry, if that... So, it's not that if that runs dry, it wouldn't stop having water on the interface. Just like why we have maybe one or two wells that are running constantly. And it's not, it's not, I hope that the well doesn't run dry. But Kevin, how many feet do we, are we down to right now? So, I'm just, you know, I'm not saying that it won't happen. But I don't see, I don't want to, I hope, I don't say in my day that a well would actually run dry. But as I said before, we have several wells. So, if one does, if one stops or whatever, the other one does kick in, just like we have a water main break. And the police patrol over there as if it was Salt Village, because that is Salt Village over that area where the truck stop is located, gonna be located. So, our police officers do come over there and patrol. And that being said, next item. Mayor's report, I have no report today. Business partner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Initially, I only had one report. Now, I have two. And I'm going to start with the behavior of the trustee that's sitting to your left. I talked with you a couple of weeks ago. And I asked if I could move my seat because he has become very hostile. And I'm not gonna say I fear for my safety, even though maybe I should. But today's... President, what he did tonight? The anger? I even asked you, Mr. Mayor, to explain to him and to show him why I can't move over. All of the equipment, the audio equipment is right here. My knee is right at it. I asked you, Mr. Mayor, to share that with him so that if I am to this side of my name, I would like to be behind my name too. It's not possible because they retrofitted your audio system in this place. Are you hearing me, Mr. Mayor? Because I am talking to you. I don't know. But anyway, tonight, his display of aggression is totally out of, totally... He was totally out of control when he banged his hand down. He banged it down on my wrist. So, therefore, I will be going to the doctor tomorrow. And who knows, the village may have a bill. Now, people ask, how come I didn't jump up and run? Nobody is ever gonna make me jump up and run anyplace. Because I don't operate in fear. My God does not permit me to do that. However, I know how to operate and act once someone has mistreated me. And I have been. And I am appalled. I thank you, sir, for changing seats as quickly as you did. I truly appreciate that. I tried to ward this off, Mr. Mayor, when I asked if I could sit down there. I asked you that. Now, I asked to offset this situation by asking if I could sit down where the department heads are sitting. You told me no, sit on up here. So, I'm back here again. And the violence that was just perpetrated on me is totally unacceptable. I am so happy that we have just a couple more months. And I am going to ask you, Mr. Mayor, to talk to that trustee to see if he can control himself and have some level of decorum while he's sitting at this board table. Otherwise, if I have to deal with that again, this is not an empty threat. I will have his little short black bud arrested. I guarantee you. Guarantee you. So, talk to him unless you want to have a major scene during your meeting. Control him. Now, trustees and anyone else that's running for office. The village has set up forums so that you can share with our residents all of the wonderful deeds that you believe that you have, that you can offer to this village. So, we're having a forum. And that forum is Saturday, March 16th. The trustees forum will start at 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock. And the school board members will be from 1 o'clock PM to 2:30. And we'll be right here in the rotunda. Everyone that can hear my voice, you keep saying we need change. And you're looking forward to the election. Well, I've always maintained that in order to truly vote, you need to be an informed voter. And the only way you can be informed is to hear the attendees' conversations, how they handle themselves under pressure. So, therefore, you would want to come to the forums. But not only would you want to come to the forums, you would want any and everyone else that you know to attend the forums too so that they too can make very informed decisions when they go to the poll. So, I'm going to ask each and every one of you within my voice to grab one of these flyers as you're leaving. You know that it's this week. But I'm gonna ask each and every one of you to stop at some store, stop at some retail, stop at some restaurant, and ask them if you could hang this in their window so that the rest of our community can see it, so that they can be in attendance as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that completes my report.
The village engineer's report, I'll read. He was excused, he had a prior, something, an emergency came up. The report goes as follows, from Jim Zarnik. The streets for the proposed 2020 street resurfacing program has been determined. And we are preparing a CDBG application that is due on March 29th. This application will require a resolution to be passed at the second board meeting this month. The elevated tank rising replacement project will be rebidded on March 26th. Hopefully, we will have more contractor bidding and we will achieve lower pricing than the, well, I'm sorry, than the wind, that wind the project was bidded last year. Right. That is his report.
I have a question. Last week, Mr. Zarnik gave a summary on the, I think it was the ordinance that was supposed to be passed this week.
We didn't do it.
Last week, he gave a summary of the ordinance that will be passed this weekend and I asked for some information and it hasn't been provided. As of yet, this is... Hold on a minute. Hold on a minute. Hold on a minute.
You're playing with me tonight. I told you.
I'm not playing either.
It's in your pocket.
Jim gave me the summary. I asked for additional information. I haven't got that information from Jim. Secondly, I'd like to know what area for the 2020 street project? What area are we talking about? Do you have any idea what area that is? For the 2020 street project?
2020?
Yeah.
I think I'm not absolutely sure, but I do know some of the areas. Paxton all the way around to Shirley. You know that area, it's just like a horseshoe. Over in Carolina Estates, there's some streets over there that they're looking at. And there's a couple of streets that they're, that they're looking to include in that. So, there's gonna be several areas, different areas that are gonna patch out to get to that point where we hope that we can get the funding.
In addition to that, I also requested a detailed ledger for the tips, two and three. And you gave me the budget versus actual. But on that particular report, and I'm hoping you go back and take a look at, it has zero on there.
That's trustee. You're talking about two different things right now.
No, I'm not talking about...
The tip has nothing to do with this.
I'm talking about the $101,000 that was supposed to be paid out for the tip.
This is, okay. Right now, we're talking about...
And this has everything to do with Jim's report.
Jim had nothing to do with what we're talking about, the tip. That has nothing to do with that. I mean, this is, we're talking about this report and you asked about DC BG and what we're gonna cover. I don't know how that had anything to do with the tip.
This, this has everything to do with Jim's report he gave last week. I think, do you believe I said Jim's report last week? I think I started off with that.
Okay, so then...
And I can only tell you what it was.
Okay, well then, maybe you can give Jim a learning to call.
No, I...
Because I don't have the answers to what you're talking about.
Okay. I gave, in fact, I gave you a copy of the summary of the request, the information that I needed. And also asked for information on the tip. Was the balance in the tip to be raised? That was last week. I also gave a copy to Jim.
Jim, I don't know how much the balance is.
I know. I gave a copy to Jim. I gave a copy to Fitch. I'm sorry.
But we're not talking about that right now.
I'm talking about what I did last week in order from what he was talking. I want to put that in there because I have no idea what he said he was gonna do. That's, that's my comment today.
Treasury report, Mr. Anthony Fett.
Thank you, Mayor. Trustee, and the rest of the board. I'm really sorry. Just to go into the bit about the tip that you asked before.
Yes.
We had a standing meeting Friday ago that you came to the last minute. As I spoke with you before, I'm asking that you understand as well the rest of the trustees in the chair that there's a lot of financial data that I have to compile. I've only been here basically a month. And a lot of the information that you're asking for is unrealistic to expect me to have that right in hand to be able to articulate what it is. Because as I told you before, I'm not giving information that if you ask a question that I cannot explain. So, with respect to the tip, that information, I can get it to you. But as always, my door is always open whenever you want to leave. With respect to that. Now, regarding my year-to-date budget, I didn't...
I'm sorry. You didn't get the memo I sent last week?
But if you also looked at the email that you sent to me, I replied back, I asked you what exactly are you asking for? To that, you never replied back to me. So, I went on our meeting Friday to discuss what exactly you're looking for. Because some of the stuff you asked for, I had no clear understanding what you needed. So, I did send back your email. Because I think I got the email from you like 10:30 that night. I got it back to you like 11 o'clock the following day. So, any information that you need from me, you can call me, leave an message, call me myself, and I'll try to get it back to you as soon as I can. But with respect to asking me information when I was not here, I don't think that's fair to be asked at this point in time. But I did provide, as you guys passed up earlier, the budget to actual as of February. And I will let you know, because Salt Village did switch over to a new system, the only thing that's not included, or two things are not included, is the main thing that's not included as of December is all this salary information. Because that comes out of ADP now. And that's a process that I have to manually input into CIVIC. Which again, in my two days that I'm here, that's something that's time consuming. So, that's gonna be a nighttime project for me. But as far as the other information as it relates to expenses, that's, that's in there. And I'm willing to address any of those concerns that you may have. It was brought up earlier with respect to the AP list, the Comcast. One of the projects that I take on myself personally, whenever I work for a municipality, there's fine rates that are running. So, that Comcast bill, the resident asked about that. Bill, we cut it half within this month or so because I worked with the IT person and A3T to see if that was a necessary expense. So, that will be changed. But again, that's one of the items that I need time to be allowed to look at and analyze and then go to the mayor and the board to make a decision on how to move forward. The other thing that was asked of me a couple of weeks ago with respect to the shut-off list, I'm proud to say that myself, the finance department, building, housing, and public works, we've guided the north side shut-off list down to zero. There's a few items still that got to be taken care of. But again, that's a work in progress. So, that's something I think we, as a group, should be committed on. And we have aggressively, we're not... One question I was asked a few weeks ago, well, in respect to the shut-off list, because it was such a high dollar amount. As of today, I'm about to say that the finance department, building and housing, as well as public works, have gotten the north side shut-off list down to zero. There's a few items still that got to be taken care of, but again, that's a work in progress. So that's something I think we, as a group, should be committed on, and we have aggressively, we're not, the north side. We're not going up to the south side right now because we have other things we're working on internally as for the process and procedures. You asked me last week, I think with respect to the audit. The audit should be completed and to you guys, presentation within the next week or week and a half. So they will be here to address those questions that was brought up as far as the audit concern. Other than that, that's, that's all that I have. But to just let you know that myself, as well as the members of the finance team, I'm working on putting together procedures and processes in place so that any information that you ask of us, we'll be able to get it in a timely manner. So in that, that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you.
Can you get a copy of this, please?
Yes, I can email it, I have it emailed to me yesterday. I will email that to you to see.
Okay, enforcement departments, did you have anything else to say, Mr. Fitch?
No, I think that's it.
Fire Department, Captain Sennawick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the period from September, I'm sorry, February 22nd through March 7th, the fire department responded to 24 calls for service. The most serious call we had was a kitchen fire in the Marrowville Apartments. Fire was quickly extinguished, the three families were displaced. Red Cross was called to assist with temporary housing. The decals have been applied to the fire teacher's new car, and the lights are ordered. All work should be completed within the upcoming weeks. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Police Department Chief White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the period of February 27th, 2019 through March 12th, during that same time period, the Sauk Village Police Department had a total of 14 arrests. Also not listed, I will be meeting with the Public Safety Committee, I guess, next month to come up with a date. I actually have the date ready already for this month. It's just a matter of us publicizing it for a community policing meeting. The first one will be the third, well, it will be the third Thursday of every month here, if it's available, this room, at 7:00. But we'll, we'll, we'll put that information out, the third Thursday of every month. Mr. Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you. Public Works Director Kevin Welber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, a few items. The fire hydrant, the fire hydrant main valve and tee located 1771 to 23rd Place, reported last report, was replaced, the boiler that was sent out was lifted, all affected residents received the boiler lift. Nothing else is going on over there at this point with the water. But during the event, we had to remove a section of corrugated pipe underneath the driveway to finish a section of main with the tee, so we have to go and replace that section left. It's roughly 30 feet of pipe. We're going to do the whole section of the driveway because we cannot connect with the old pipe. Staff went out and cut some wet areas, we got a little bit of freeze towards the end here, and the weather kind of warmed up into daytime, but we took out a mower we have, we purchased several years back here, it's for cutting ditchways and stuff that you can walk into. And we started over at the village hall, the back retention pond here. We have a project ongoing with that one coming into the spring. And we also went out to our west tower, water tower on the other side of the highway, and next to that area, there's some high cat-tiller areas, this will affect part of the project we're working on out there. So we cut that area down. The next place we're going to try to get into, which we might not have the weather to do it, would be down at 223rd Street in Murphy. Also, our live truck, we just received back about a week and a half ago. It was certified for the dialectical stuff and all the electrical portion of it, but during a streetlight repair at 3123 to 23rd Place, the arm fell off during the wind event. We got the arm back up, but during the coming down process of the truck, we could not get, come back down. We finally got it down, but we had to send it back into the shop. So we're going to be behind a little more on the streetlights and some of the tree removals at this point. Hopefully, no more than a couple more days, we'll hear something. We're still doing small jobs at the village hall. There's always something up here, heating, air light, plumbing, something always going on in the village hall. The age of the building has started to pass its 10-year mark, so it's going to start having some of those issues. Staff, also during that event, a while back, we were prepping a few streetlights. Those streetlights are just going to be put on, I'm just bleeding on the report here, the report, we still have them in, in the process, but when the truck is returned, we will return to those. And that was on 217th and Merrill and 215 Place in Jeffrey. During a staff visit over our west water tower, we do periodic visits every two weeks at the towers. We go into the bottom of the tower, there's a doorway. The west tower is the one that we're currently working on to try to get the main riser pipe replaced. We walked into it a couple of days ago and noticed there was ice on the floor. One of the reasons why we're replacing the pipe is because it's starting to rot away, so that created an ice dam on the, on the pipe. We did find one leak at the lower section and one further up. The one at the lower section, we will repair, the one that's higher up is smaller. We're hoping that we can get by by not spending the money right now to throw it away. So if we can get to the project date, which is about a month and a half from now, hopefully that pipe will be replaced. We won't have to spend roughly around $6,000 or $7,000, just for a clamp to be put on an old pipe. Also, from the list we received for the extra money from the village, I placed an order for the 180 yards of the PlaySafe mulch, it's a certified mulch that goes in the parks. Part of the mulch, at least most of the mulch, will probably go into the existing park equipment that's there. But also during some of this, we actually are going to order some of the new equipment, and that'll be part of the fall zones around that new equipment. I've been getting a lot of calls about branches. Most of the branches that I've noticed are not larger branches, there's some here and there, but most of this is look small sticks. We are not at this point able to go out on a special pickup, so we'll hope everybody's patient, but if you do have larger branches that are crossing anything from any village property or village trees, definitely call us up, we'll take a look at it. But I'm asking everybody just to make those piles in the parkway or stack them up. Our first pickup is unfortunately, it starts in May, it's May 6th, so they can be placed out at that time. And as reported, the north side shut-off list is completed as of 3/12/19, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Economic Development, Director Joe Wizwada.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the period of January 1st to February 28th, 2019, code enforcement issued 277 citations and over 100 notices of violation. Total fines for the citations totaled $37,600, and for the same period, $4,550 was collected for fines. 178 notices to appear will be sent out for adjudication in April. Over $689,588 was sent to the Illinois Comptroller's Office in 2018, with only $28,405 being paid for the same period. Legalists being, are beginning to evaluate placing liens on the properties for code violations on property matters in lieu of being sent to collection. As you can tell, it's becoming ineffective, so we're working on an alternate solution for that. We're working on updating our vacant abandoned home list, which after a cursory review, has significant deficiencies. Staff is working on updating our vacant abandoned homes and conducting property maintenance inspections on those homes. In addition, the vacant abandoned homes will be categorized and owners identified for each property. The board has before tonight a resolution amending Section 18 by adding Article 19, requiring registration of default mortgage vacant property. This will require banks and lending institutions to register properties that they initiate foreclosure, as well as other vacant properties. The board also has before it a resolution authorizing the entry into an agreement with property registration champions to serve as the village's vendor to perform registrations on behalf of the village. As you know, the village will receive $250 for each property registered. The vendor will be charging $100 of that, so the total will be 350, that's the total charge, the village getting 250. We will begin implementation of this immediately after passage, and we will be likely generating about $80,000 in additional revenue for the village each year. The board also has before tonight a resolution authorizing the entry of an agreement between the villages Sauk Village and Robinson Engineering for Phase 1 engineering for roadway and rail expansion and the village's logistics center. This is being funded in large part by a grant through Invest and Cook for $350,000. Speaking of Invest and Cook, Village Engineer Jim Zarnik, our new staff planner Maggie Jar, and myself have been working on the 2019 Invest and Cook Grant. Invest and Cook grants are for transportation projects, and we are working on grant for Phase 1 engineering for Sauk Trail and 394 intersection. We will be seeking construction funding through the next phase of the grant process through CMAC. We're also moving forward on the Sauk Trail pathway project. As you know, the village, Steger, and Cook County were awarded a grant for a pathway along Sauk Trail from 394 to Cottage Grove. This grant was awarded some time ago, but has been kind of in a neutral position for quite some time. The village at the time was going to be taking the financial lead on this project until we renegotiated the terms of the intergovernmental agreement between all parties. So now Cook County, Department of Transportation, and Highways will be taking the financial lead, while the village and Steger will remain partners on this project. Finally, the gas and wash construction has been well underway. I was recently out at the site, the interior construction has been ongoing, and it really looks nice. The state fire marshal has signed off on the underground storage tanks. The building inspections have been routine, and we haven't had any major issues out there at all. They look forward to opening sometime in the spring. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I have a copy of this report, please?
My report was placed in the trustees and everyone's box this evening.
Okay.
I just have something to add. You're stating that we're going to do resolutions tonight? I show ordinances, which to me, a resolution, that's what we're going to go forward, we have ordinances.
Okay, then I may have spoken as to what the content of those were.
I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure. And also, do you think that you could actually send an email when we have a new business going in? We're not always aware what the business is until we actually see it. So if you could kind of, when, I mean, I noticed that we're getting a new cafe, and then there's another business open, so if you could kind of let us know.
Yeah, that, that shouldn't be a problem. So anytime the business licenses are issued, I'll notify the board on that, that's not a problem.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Enforcement trustees, standing committee, and cabinets, public service committee, trustee bringing the reports.
Last week, I requested some information from Rosa Indian Area regarding the 100, approximately $100,000 for additional from the Invest and Cook County. Of course, I couldn't get that information from whoever, because I was sent it to Neil and Billy first, and I haven't been able to get that information. In addition to that, I also asked for information on the tip for the $100,000, should have been tip free. The money's coming out of that, I just want to know what the balance is, okay? So that's what I was, so that I asked for last week, and I haven't been able to get that.
That's my, that's my.
Okay, well, yeah, the email was to me. In addition to that, I noticed that when we get ready, when we get ready to vote on the, was it ordinance or was it resolution?
Ordinance.
Okay. It doesn't specify the 100 and the approximately $100,000 that we're going to do for the additional feasibility study? It does not mention it in there? And I'd like to know, are we going to just do the 350,000, or are we going to do the $100,000 for feasibility study? As well, is it? Is it in there? Yeah. So I mean, I just want to know, we supposed to vote on both or just one? And in addition to that, I'd like to speak on the hostile environment, environment. Work environment here. Speak on the hostile, hostile work environment here at the village hall. We understand everybody is a little hot at times, but some members of the board are intentionally intimidating and threatening people when they sit up here and talk. That's a fact, and we all know that. We need to be more patient and considerate of other people's situations. And I ask, and you know I get my house out here, you know, I ask that we be a little bit more patient and try to, you know, talk to each other in a light tone and get your thoughts out. There's no wrong answer, there's no right answer. You have your opinion, they have theirs. We should be able to speak our opinion because we're United States citizens, we have a right to speak. And just to come to an agreement or something, don't mean that you're right. And it doesn't mean that you can cut off a trustee every time they get to talk. We got, we got opinions, and we should be able to articulate them as we go along. All this moving on, it's when somebody talks, we cut that out, we're grown people. And we need to, you know, cut, cut, you know, act accordingly. And that's, that's for.
Budgeting Finance, trustee Roger Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only comment is that next Wednesday, wherever our committee meeting here in the rotunda is 7:00 PM, that's all I have.
I have a question for trustee Grant.
Sure.
On, uh, you just got a budget and actual, budget work and actual, and I thought it was a question about it. And if you look on here, under this tip three, it says, and I know this is wrong, but it has like 100, do you have 149 million? I think that's.
What page?
Part 123, part two. Maybe I have that sign the page, or maybe I have to stay this page. And this is just for your edification, this last word, you know. In fact, it's on the last page. And it shows we got like a net revenue of 153 million, I don't think that's right.
Wait, 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 could you say, could you, wait, what page?
The last page, 19.
My last page is page six.
Uh, the page 19.
I think, I think my pages might be out of order, but, oh, okay.
Okay.
The pages are out of order.
Okay, it's page, it's page, this is page 19.
This page 19.
It says $1,499,044.13.
This has 153 million, 183,184 dollars.
If you look at the tops of your pages, it's different funds. So this is page 19 under the general fund. But when you see page six, that's under fire and ambulance, you're next to the last page, trustee. So if you go backwards.
You said on page seven.
Yeah, there's two different pages out there.
I don't know, we, it's a counter.
153 million, 154 dollars.
I know we got your mind.
153,104 dollars. Okay, there's two different pages.
Okay, and then you might want to look at page 17 too.
I mean, which one, though, I mean, you got two different 17s here.
I have script, oh, that one. But you know what, there's so many things ahead on the highlight, I'll just give it to you.
Yeah, so I just received this too, so I'll, let me know, and I'll take a look at it, because I have not had a chance. So trustee, going back to page 19, so, so going back to page 19, when you said the 149 million?
No, 153 million.
You said page 19?
It's two 19s, right here. Right here.
Yeah, I, I think these are like out of order. I don't think some's not quite right with the way it's. Because I only have one page nineteen, and it has a hundred and forty-nine million dollars. But, but, but I want to say that that hundred and forty-nine million that you're looking at is not a dollar amount. It's actually a percentage amount.
No, 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 I'm looking at page nineteen, it has a hundred fifty-three million, one hundred fifty-three thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars. Uh, this is a net revenue from the expenditure.
Yeah, so I, so I think, so different pages, I'm looking at the same page, but like, I'm looking at the same thing, but on a different page you're looking at. And that column at the top, it says percent of budget. So that number is not an actual dollar amount, it's actually a percentage. So it's, it's just formatted wrong on the actual sheet. Right, you're talking about the one below it, right? They're talking, right, so that should be a percent number two, not a dollar amount. So I'm, it's just a formatting error on the, on the sheet. That's a percentage. It should be a percentage, not a dollar sign. It's kind of misleading. Right, you see. Right, you see, you see, you see one, five, three, comma, uh, whatever else you see, right? Then another comma. So that's, that's a dollar sign, that's a dollar amount. It's misleading. It should just be one million four hundred, well, I'm showing you what I see. One hundred forty-nine million percent, but like, we'll, we'll talk, we'll talk about it offline. No, I mean, it's, it's, it's just a formatting error. It should be a percentage and not, it looks like it's a dollar amount, but it's not. It should be a percentage, it's just formatted incorrectly, that's all.
Who typed that up?
It's not something that's typed. This is strictly from a way that can format this, so it should be a percentage sign and not an actual dollar, dollar amount. Okay.
Any other questions presented?
Yes.
Okay. Housing and Intergovernmental Relations Committee trustee Tate. Orders review committee trustee Lundy Town.
Were you giving a report? I know you were answering.
No, I, I just made the comment that, uh, meeting next Wednesday at seven in the Rotunda, that's all I had.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next ordinance review committee will be April eighth here at six P.M. in the Rotunda. Um, and our commit, well, we discussed three ordinances. One is under review right now. But I'll have two ordinances that I'm going to present next, uh, Tuesday at our committee on the whole. Possibly the third, but it's, right now it's under review. And that ends my report.
Intergovernmental Relations Committee trustee, Ms. Zupan.
So I want to apologize for not having our meeting last week. Circumstances called me out of town at the last minute. But as the chief alluded to earlier this evening, uh, we will be starting to have what we're going to call Chat with the Chief on the third Thursdays of the month, uh, probably starting in April, not this month unfortunately, but starting in April. Those will be here starting at seven P.M. in the Rotunda. We're probably going to do them, uh, two-hour increments where he will be here. These will not be complaint sessions, but constructive sessions with the residents where they can come and hear him talk on different subjects each month. Uh, and he will also give different officers the opportunity as time goes on to speak as well. But we're going to start off with him being the key speaker and picking different topics and advertising those throughout the community so that we hope to get, uh, a lot of resident engagement going forward. So, uh, you should be seeing a lot of information coming out on those as we get that, uh, actually advertised going forward. Um, and that concludes my report for this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Community outreach trustee Ronald Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time I have nothing.
Reports of committee commissions, senior advisory committee, Ms. David Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees. Our next meeting for the senior advisory council is Thursday, March fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. All are welcome. Uh, our first senior luncheon of the year, the New Year's scheduled for Thursday, March twenty-eighth here at the Senior Center. The Eastern Star is sponsoring, and they will be providing lunch for the seniors for your charge. Uh, game night is every first and third Friday in the Senior Center. Please come out this Friday and invite the seniors for big lists and other games. Medicare awareness educational seminar is scheduled for Thursday, March twenty-first in the Senior Center. Please invite all the seniors out to hear about changes and updates to Medicare from ten A.M. to twelve P.M. Seda has requested to come back to the Senior Center on Monday, April twenty-second and Tuesday, April twenty-third. The senior committee has given them okay for those dates, and they're just waiting for approval from the state. Also, we are working on scheduling our first casino trip of the year in May. But more details are to come hopefully by the next executive board meeting. Also, we solicit your prayers and your help as we attempt to make our Salt Village Senior Center the place for seniors to be this year in two thousand nineteen. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Unfinished business. I'll accept the motion to approve the ordinance submitting Chapter Six Alcohol Beverage Establishments of the village municipal code of the village of Salt Village, Cook, Cook County.
Yeah, I think it's just a cocky over.
For the hours. Our new business, motion to approve the account payable on the first date of March two thousand, uh, should be March, maybe?
March twelfth.
Yep, March twelfth, twenty nineteen, in the amount of three hundred eight thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and forty-eight cents.
So.
Moved by trustee Grant, seconded by trustee Carter. Any questions?
Uh, just a comment. I noticed that, uh, last week, we had a, a different format, and I think that the treasurer mentioned, or interfinance director mentioned that we had to do something with the upgrade to Civic. So there's a different format on it this week. Uh, and I think that, uh, we're used to seeing it as trustees, uh, by department novels instead of by, it's kind of like we alphabetized it and then placed it, uh, by vendor. So I asked him, hopefully you guys in mind, to go back to that old format so that we could, it just, I think we're used to seeing it that way, so it'd be cleaner for us to look at it. Um, so that's just only the comment I made, comment I have.
If you look at the very back page of your accounts table, you will see places for trustees to sign, your names to sign, and before the just the village card. Civic is also working on giving them the labels or the titles at Salt Villages. But going forth, we will have one copy that will have each of your signature on it saying that you approved the accounts bill. If you didn't approve it, then actually you wouldn't sign your name.
Any other questions?
I have a comment. Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, February twelfth and twenty-sixth, I asked for copies of invoices, so this week I wanted to do the same thing. I would like copies of, on page one, copies of invoices for Amazon businesses. Last, uh, pay, uh, February, we spent three hundred some dollars. This time, we spent like four hundred ninety-three dollars and ten cents. I'd like to know, uh, cop, have copies of those invoices. Secondly, on page two, uh, where it says Comcast, we have, uh, two invoices on there from twenty eighteen. And I don't recall them being on the agent report, and I looked on my agent report, and I like to know why these uh, things weren't on the agent report. Also, I'd like a copy of the invoices for, uh, for those, uh, particular vendors. Also, on, um, page three, the Dr. Strater is here again, and we paying her for human, uh, resource services and newly negotiation, but she has never been a proper holder of board for approval. I like invoices for her. Also, on page four, I, I like invoices for Hisco, Giller, and Old Donald. This again is the attorneys, uh, well, they are attorneys, but they doing all the work. I like, uh, copies of their invoices for them because they have never been before the board for approval. Also, on page five, I'd like to know, we just paid, uh, Olson and Stirk almost, uh, five thousand dollars since we paying, um, last group. I'd like to know what we paying Olson and Stirk for, so who is the attorney? I'd like a copy of those invoices. And also, on that particular page on five, we, for professional service for economic development, I'd like to know what we doing that for. I'd like a copy of that invoice. Also, on page six, uh, building permits inspections for safety. I'd like to know, uh, I, I guess this is for a different, uh, I don't know if this is the same address or different addresses, but the thing is that, uh, they're old, and I'd like to know where they been. They should have been on the agent report, but I don't recall seeing them on the agent report. So I like copying those invoices too. Uh, Martha, I have my copy at home, so I'll email you a copy of, um, the request. Uh, you know, I got to wear it, you know. Just, just, just for you, just for you. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. That's my comment.
Uh, trustee, when do you, when do you get your accounts bill?
No, I just, when I get my, I just say.
I just asked you a question.
I had my, my account bill, whenever they gave it to me, that's when I had it.
All I did was ask you when did you get your account?
Whenever they gave it to me, that's when I had it.
Okay, that's when, that's when. I didn't give you anything.
No.
Okay, so you had two days to come in and ask about it, uh, the invoices. And now you're asking right before you vote.
We're not going back and forth like you said, and I don't have an option. I can ask for invoices whenever I feel like it. You don't dictate to me when I need to ask for invoices. I will copy these invoices regardless of when I ask, but I might ask for them next year or last week. I want invoices, what's the difference?
Any, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
May I respond to trustee Brewer?
If she may.
She asked a question about, uh, why aren't things showing up on the agent report? So, so when we get an invoice in, and if it's not logged into Civic right away, it's not going to show up on the agent report. So what was, what's happening is, I'm not sure if maybe Kevin or whoever the department head is sitting on the invoice, then they turn it in, and then we pay it.
Well, then we should have an invoice with the date spent when we get the invoices in, so we'll know it's been sitting around for two or three, whatever, you know.
I think that's, I agree with you.
I need a copy of the invoices, find out when the invoices came in. Because if we get some invoices, we keep for two or three months, we need to know why.
I agree with you, and so that's, that's why I think that it comes down to the department heads and them getting it to the finance director, whoever it goes to, in a timely fashion, instead of them sitting on it. I agree.
Okay, all right.
Um, are there any other questions? Um, as far as the invoices, they, all the department heads have been given timelines to that. They have to submit their invoices by certain time prior to accounts payable. So each department head was given an email, so they were notified because of what was said prior. All right. Madam Twich, would you please, I'm sorry. Madam Twich, please call the room.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
No.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Allen? Okay, we're going to, the ordinances, um, will, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance for the village of Salt Village, Cook County, uh, for the business and business regulation, adding Article, uh, nineteen to title registration of the property of this invasion property. And part of that presentation that we got last week, it's two parts that we have to, uh, move, uh, ordinance for. This is part one. I'll entertain a motion to accept that.
So move.
Moved by trustee Grant, seconded by trustee Tate. Any questions? Madam Plur?
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the ordinance for the, um, Cook, Cook County, Illinois, authorization to enter an agreement with that prop, with the property registration champions, PRC, a community champions company to provide services pursuant to ordinance nineteen.
So move.
Moved by trustee Zupan, seconded by trustee Carter. Any questions?
I have a comment. Um, I requested before that whenever we approve, um, an ordinance or a resolution that we, we provide, provide with the number, usually, you could use the, uh, use the copy we have, it's like trees. You know, we could just, you know, write in the number. So, you know, if you could, if one of these one. And if that's easy, that's, you know.
Madam Plur, please call the room.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution of the village of Salt Village in Cook County, authorizing the village engine to a preliminary engineering services agreement with Rafflesburg Engineering for the pavement, of phase one engineering costs for the extension of the logistics road and rail spur expansion tank, expansion project.
So move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Zupan, seconded by trustee Grant. Any questions?
I have a comment. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, this, um, resolution, this is a resolution, uh, last week, they talked about three hundred fifty thousand dollars for the, uh, investment Cook County. And then there was additional a hundred, so approximately a hundred seventy thousand for additional work that had been done. But if you look at this resolution, it only specifies, um, the three hundred and fifty thousand, it doesn't tell what the hundred thousand dollars is for. Uh, it doesn't specify the amount. It's not giving you a clear picture of, we're just, this sounds like the community is just paying the three hundred fifty thousand dollars. But we actually, but we actually putting out a hundred or more, about a hundred thousand dollars more for additional study, feasibility study, and that should be included in here too.
We're not putting anything out. It's not, I'll let, I'll let the, um, the development to explain it to you, you know, they got it, but I'll let it explain.
Thank you. Um, so the village entered into an intergovernmental agreement with Cook County, um, some time ago. Um, Cook County is actually funding three hundred fifty thousand of this through the investing Cook grant that the village got. Um, out of that, the village is going to be paying, um, a hundred thousand dollars. So the total amount of the project cost is four hundred fifty thousand. If you remember Mr. Zarnik's presentation that he did here, um, I believe it was one week ago, um, and he provided that presentation to, uh, the village clerk, I believe he did send it out to the trustees as well. Um, he did specify that they were going to be coming in at about four hundred forty-nine thousand, or right about, the total amount. They won't exceed, uh, that amount. The hundred thousand would be coming out of the TIF funds. Um, there's over four hundred thousand available in TIF funds, um, for this project, so we have more than enough to fund that.
Okay, uh, well, I got requested before, I asked for the TIF, I wanted to send the TIF. Never got that information. Also, if we're getting four hundred forty-nine thousand for this, then you should have something from C N, C N that explains what their contribution is to it. We're going to spend a hundred thousand, approximately a hundred thousand dollars of our funds to, for rail spur, and it's going to benefit C N as well as us, but you're not telling. and it's going to benefit C N as well as us, but you're not telling, uh, well, whoever, you know? It's not explaining to us why they're not doing a monetary contribution to, uh, this project, okay? It seems like we're paying for it even though it's out of the TIF, it's pre, pre-allocated funds, tax dollars, that's what it is. And C N is talking about the, uh, what they're going to do, but they haven't put anything in there and writing about where their, you know, contributions to it. And that's why I'm questioning, and then three hundred fifty, uh, thousand that you should, in this particular resolution, it should say what the actual amount is supposed to be, the three hundred fifty plus the one, uh, approximately one hundred thousand. So what is it supposed to be? The whole thing for, or you can put the cost in, I'm looking at the whole, the whole cost to be listed in the resolution. You send it, maybe more or simpler, and, you know, Spencer or sales, they'll come back and will say, okay, we spent three fifty, then you come back saying there's a hundred thousand. We don't know, cause it's not in the resolution.
Right, so when, when a developer comes into a community to build a development, um, they'll pay for the roads, the, uh, water veins, the infrastructure. Um, most of those come out of, of development cost, okay? So if C N is not going to say, okay, I'm going to give you, you know, five million dollars to build an additional rail spur, those are development costs, so those don't come from C N. C N doesn't put out money to build railroads. They don't do that anymore, that's just something they, they stopped basically, you know, a million years ago, um, when they stopped building railroads across the country. So today now, when, when you have those development costs, those development costs are paid for by the, the developer, which would have been VP Partners at this. Cook County has found an interest in this project and so has the, uh, state of Illinois. So we're going to be looking at alternate funding sources to expand the rail service into the logistic park so that way we can develop the rest of that, um, logistic center. So that's, that's the whole purpose of that. But that also, that also goes for, um, expanding the roadways as well. So we're, we're looking at doing a roadway expansion here as well. So those are development costs that the village would have had anyway. So those are costs that we're, we're actually saving because of the money that we're getting from the grant.
So is, uh, the amount of four hundred forty, uh, nine thousand should be, uh, addressed in the actual, um, ordinance? It should spell out the amount instead of, you know, nothing's here. And not with that, we know we're going to get additional, uh, uh, help from C N and what is that, H D R or something, or what is that?
H D R.
H D R, okay. They, they are not even specified here, it seems like, I mean, we just put something out there, they come back and charge us for seven hundred thousand dollars.
Right, the agreement, the agreement between H D R is not between the village and H D R. Uh, Robinson Engineering is the lead engineer on this, so they've, they've contracted with H D R.
Okay, so the point I'm trying to make is, we don't have any information on it. We don't have any documentation or anything. This ordinance resolution or anything, we get, has no dollar amount or anything. We're just saying, okay, we're going to do it. That doesn't mean anything, you know? We need to put some figures in there and who's going to be doing it, so that's my comment. We need some additional information, need to be put in the, uh, resolution.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's motion on the floor.
Okay, I'm sorry. Madam Toy, would you please call the room?
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Okay, motion is carried. Now I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.